Welcome, everyone, to the March 27, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for in the order. Anyone that would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 848-507-529. Join the meeting through the link on the Microsoft Teams posted on the agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, but despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public may speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. First, we're going to start with a roll call of all board members. Mr. Veatch?
David H. Veatch, and I approve of this format.
Paul C. Semple, I approve of the format.
Lee Hubby, I approve of the format.
Stephen D. DeBoeran, I approve.
As Randy Pardash, as do I. If any citizen or non-board members are participating via the call, please make sure that we can identify you with the last digits of your phone number and your name, if possible. First, we proceed with the hearing notice will be read by staff. Sarah Clark on my right. After that, you can present your appeal or your application. Your representative will do it. Anyone in favor of the matter will be asked if they'd like to comment. Then I will read all the correspondents. After that, we'll see if anyone has any questions or would like to vote, I mean, would like to have an opinion against the application. And you'll all be allotted up to five minutes to do any of those comments. Next, we let the applicant rebut any testimony. We'll direct questions to anyone present, the board. We will close the public hearing after that. And at that point, just the board deliberates. We will not be getting comments from even the applicant's attorneys at that point unless somebody on the board would like to re-invite them back in, which has happened seldomly. Then we usually vote on the appeal at the end of deliberations. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. With that, I believe we have meeting minutes. Paul?
Yes, we have minutes from our meeting on February 27, 2025. I'll move to approve those minutes as published.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
And Randy votes yes as well. First application that we're going to hear is 25-005, David Patterson and Elaine M. Patterson, owners of property. Actually, I'm going to just make it known that the first one is continued, and we actually are required to read out the whole advertisement. So that's application 24-140. Sarah?
Application number 24-140, Cynthia Waters, Carol William F. Riley Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 48 C. Miss Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 1A, Block 20J, Lot X10. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 14.5 feet from the Southrallya Butter. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and it will be located 14.5 feet from the Southrallya Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage for the 10 dwellings is 9,102 square feet, 11.2 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 9,263 square feet, 11.4 percent, where 10 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it has 10 dwellings where one is allowed. The lot contains 81,358 square feet in our 20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from January 9, 2025.
Attorney Riley, welcome, and thank you for letting us know about this.
Well, that, thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated in my correspondence some time ago, a member of our team is not available today, and so this matter has been already rescheduled by the central permitting coordinator.
And now we're going to make it official. So, Paul?
I'll move to grant the request to continue its to April 10, 2025.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have 25-005, and that is 312 Round Cove Road. Sarah?
Application number 25-005, David T. Peterson, Elaine M. Patterson, owners of property located at 312 Round Cove Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 8J, Block 39, Lot C288. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,890 square feet, 4.7 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 2,361 square feet, 7.7 percent, or 10 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 30,915 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5 via the protective bylaw.
Welcome.
Oh, hello. I'm Pat Costello, general contractor for the Pattersons. Dave, the owner, is here. Yeah, so we understand that this, when this house was built, the 30,000-square-foot lot made it conforming, but that's been changed to 60,000 necessary now. And we're looking to add this 13-by-17, one-story bedroom addition on the back of the house. The house was currently a three-bedroom house, but there was one very small, like, seven-foot-wide bedroom. That's kind of, it's going to become a laundry room and a bathroom. So we're just looking to keep it three bedrooms by adding this pretty modest 13-by-17 bedroom. The height of it's like 14.8 feet. It's at the rear of the property. Nowhere near any setback problems here. The lot coverage, I think what you said was 4.7. I'm not sure if that's correct. It might have been 6.1 originally, because I think we had two plot plans. But anyway, the proposed lot coverage is 7.7. So it just went up pretty small amount. We currently have an approved building permit. We're renovating the house. We've done the extension on the garage on the left side, so we're just looking for the, you know, permission to build the bedroom on the back of the house there. I don't know. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So generally, people go through the criteria. Why don't you just pick the ones that are applicable? If you want me to run you through them, I can do that. Does that help?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So basically, you think the site is adequate for this addition?
Oh, sure, yeah. It's a very large lot. It's, there's a bank pretty much all around the bank, all around the three sides of the property.
And it's compatible with neighboring structures?
Absolutely, yeah.
And the extent of the proposed increase of the nonconformity, you said already that it was slight?
Very slight, yes.
Yep. And suitability of the site is adequate, in your opinion, with regard to the natural environment, and slopes, and vegetation?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Any impact on scale siding and mass on the neighborhood view?
No, not at all. I don't think anyone could see this addition unless you walked around the back of the house.
Right, right. And there shouldn't be any impact on traffic and safety?
No, not whatsoever.
And you're all set with sewerage, which I can tell by the health letter, and the visual impact on the neighborhood. Well, actually, that's not even applicable. So it sounds like we've done our job here with that. And at this point, I'll ask, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing nobody anywhere wishing to do that, I will now read three correspondences. One is from our health agent, and the other two are from neighbors that are in favor. So our health agent tells us that she reviewed the plans to renovate, and it's acceptable to the Health Division. That's received by Judith Giorgio today, 3/25, no, wait a minute, Tuesday, 3/25/25. And then we have a note from the people that live at 303 Round Cove Road, which is Nancy Tochinsky, and she says she's responding to the submitted application for 312, and they support and have no objections. Then we have a note from the people that live at 328 Round Cove Road, named Michael and Cindy Toomey. They also wrote to us on March 8 and say that they support the application, and they say it complies, and they have no problem with it. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to ask a question? And then if everybody can shut off their devices, I know it happens. It actually just happened to me, even though it wasn't supposed to. So is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams which speaks against or has a specific question? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. So questions from the board. Dave Veatch?
I have no questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
All right. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Steve?
I think it's a nice project. It's all within the setbacks and everything else. I don't think it's going to be seen from the street. I would approve it.
And Lee?
I totally agree. It meets our criteria, and it's modest, and no way detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Paul?
I agree with my colleagues.
Dave?
As do I.
And I actually misspoke when I said it's not a big increase on nonconformity. There was no increase on nonconformity. I apologize for that.
Okay.
So with that, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. And I assume you're going to continue working on the property from where you are now?
Oh, yeah. We've been trying to get after this as soon as possible.
Right.
We're kind of at the stage of the project where we're ready to do the addition now on the back and complete, you know, the siding and roofing, so.
All right. And you've been able to keep your vehicles and so forth off the road and on the property?
Yeah.
That'll be continuing?
Yeah. Everything's on the property. That's true.
Then I will move to approve the application with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at enabling property with the permission of the property owner. I think that may be the only condition we need.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
And just for the process, can we immediately start working?
I think you should just check in with the building commissioner about all those rules.
Okay.
Or on the website of the, you know, and...
Yeah, I know. We had...
So the answer is no, you can't start tomorrow.
I think it was part of the original permit, but we'll check.
Yep.
Get it served.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to go over to 40 Bayview Road, Samir and Mary Jaiswal, and that's 25-007.
Application number 25-007, Samir and Mary Jaiswal, 59 Smith Road, Northborough, Mass. 01532. Owners of property located at 40 Bayview Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 3C, Block 53A, Lot E3. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming shed on a non-conforming lot via the replacement of the shed. The existing proposed shed will be non-conforming, and it is located six feet from the road where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 10,900 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of protective bylaw.
Welcome. Just state your name, if you would.
Good afternoon. My name is Samir Jaiswal.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. We're proposing, we have a shed on the property right now. We bought property about four years ago. We're doing some renovation. We've been doing renovations on it ever since. We're moving permanently to the address, and the shed is, as you can see, in fairly bad repair. I've always already had to replace the door entirely, because the wood is starting to rot and it's breaking. So what we'd like to do is just replace it with another non-conforming shed approximately the same size of the 8x12, and on exactly the same site. There aren't, unfortunately, the property itself is non-conforming, and we can't get a spot on the property where we can be more than 25 feet from the road. It's a corner lot. It's the corner of Bayview and Circle Drive. And so we're a little constrained by where everything can go. If you wouldn't mind, I didn't do that little list. If you wouldn't mind...
Oh, no, that's okay. And I don't even know of this one, really. You're not getting any closer to anything. It's the same spot. Does anybody here on the panel think that we need to go through the criteria for this? No. Seeing none. So we're going to see if there is anybody on Microsoft Teams or in the audience that has a problem. No, that actually wants to say, vote in favor of this, wants us to vote in favor. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. I have one note from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, from March 25, 2025, and she has no issues with the shed location. And is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? No. Questions from the board. Dave Veatch?
I have no questions.
Paul?
No questions.
No questions.
Steve has no questions.
Nor do I. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. Okay. Deliberations. Dave Veatch?
Well, this is a nice improvement. It's going to look much better than sheds that's there. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. It meets our criteria. Happy to support it.
Very good. Paul?
I agree with Mr. Veatch.
And Lee?
I agree as well.
So as do I.
As do I. Okay. Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted, with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner.
And Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
And Paul votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
It's unanimous. I vote yes as well. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Now we go over to 50 Hallway Street, and this is application 25-008. Sarah?
Application number 25-008, 50 Hallway Street, Realty Trust, care of Mark Zetti, 445 West Barnstable Road, Ostrville, Mass. 02655. Owner of property located at 50 Hallway Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 17C, Block 35, Lot 17. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming exterior mechanical system appliance on a non-conforming lot via the addition of an additional appliance. The existing exterior mechanical system appliances are non-conforming, located 7.2 feet from the Westrallya Butter. The proposed generator will be non-conforming, located 6.5 feet from the Westrallya Butter, where a 15-foot setback is required. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 6,026 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of protective bylaw.
Is there anybody here, Mark Zetti, online?
Yes.
Oh, very good.
Hello.
Thank you for coming.
Yep. My name is Brian. I'm representing Mark.
Very good. Tell us about the mechanical...
So the client is asking, it's just a 20K generator that we're looking to install next to the air conditioning units.
And right now, the one you have is 7.2 feet from the Westrallya Butter, and you want to get a little bit closer? 6.5?
Well, the units, the air conditioning units are the 7.1, and we're just looking, we'll be about a foot closer, just because of the distance we need off the house for the generator.
Okay. So the generator will be 6.5. I don't think we need to go through the criteria on this one either necessarily, but we can if anyone has a problem with that. No. Seeing none. Okay. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please make it known. No one wants to speak in favor. I have one letter from the Conservation Commission, considering of the location of the application, and that was received on March 4, 2025. The Conservation Commission said the project was given a negative two determination, which is actually a good thing, so does not need to be conditioned to meet performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act. That concludes our correspondences. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to ask a question or speak against this application? Seeing none. Questions from the board. Dave Veatch?
I have no question.
Paul?
I have no question. I would point out, I guess, that the application checks off an application for a variance when, in fact, as I understand it, it's an application for a special permit.
It is for a special permit, correct.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
No questions.
Steve has no questions.
Nor do I. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
All votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
And as do I. So deliberations. Dave Veatch?
It's a perfect location on the lot for this piece of equipment, and certainly not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, so we'll support it.
Paul?
Yes, I understand it can be conditioned by the Conservation Commission, so I don't see a problem from our viewpoint. I think it clearly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the neighboring house is quite a distance from the lot line, so I don't think this is going to have an effect on them, so I would support it.
And I agree. And just for anyone listening, why didn't they need a variance? Because they already have a structure that is 7.2, which is already, you know, not far enough away, so you get to ask for a special permit when you're already closer than the laws provide for. So that's why they didn't need a variance. Otherwise, this might have been a different conversation. Okay. So with that, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
All right. Dave Veatch seconds.
Have I done that?
Yeah, we already did that, so.
All right. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes on that.
Paul?
All votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Have a nice evening.
Great. Thank you. You, too.
Brian, can you just provide your last name and record, please?
Antos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Now we are going to be at 16 Windmill, 25-009, Attorney William Riley, in care of Jane Chandler.
Application number 25-009, Jane K. Chandler, care of William F. Riley Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 16 Windmill Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 16A, Block 19, Lot H3. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the elevation of the existing dwelling and the construction of an addition and decks. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 5.1 feet from Windmill Lane, 23.2 feet from the Southwesterly Butter, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 13. The proposed elevated dwelling will be non-conforming, and it will be located 5.1 feet from Windmill Lane, where a 40-foot setback is required, 21 feet from the Southwesterly Butter, where a 25-foot setback is required, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District, where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,315 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 1,447 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains zero square feet of buildable land, where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 29,500 square feet of land area, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of protective bylaw.
Attorney Wiley, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Bill Riley, on behalf of the Chandler family...
Who do you have with you?
I'm going to get there.
All right. I just don't want to be rude. I just don't know the woman's name.
I'm accompanied today by Allison Alessi, who's the architect who made the modifications to the structure. And David Clark is here also. He's the engineer on the project. So principally, this project was to elevate the house out of the floodplain. As a part of that, they wanted to make a couple of small additions. And so I'm going to ask Allison to explain what the goals of the applicants were and how she accomplished them.
Oh, great. Do we want to look at drawings, or I can just talk? Oh, thanks.
Oh, great. Do we wanna look at drawings, or I can just talk? Oh, thanks. The, the goal of the project, though, as, as Bill mentioned, um, the existing foundation is in the flood zone, and when the clients, um, purchased it, it did not pass inspection. So they knew that when they purchased the home that they had to put in a new foundation. Well, it turns out that it's not that simple at this site, so we're in the FEMA flood zone, and we're required to raise the house approximately. The main house is ra- is, is being lifted over four feet, four foot two and three quarters, I believe it is. Um, and then in the process of doing that, we, we thought it would be nice to add a few modest additions, so we're adding 130 square feet of, uh, kitchen area on the first floor. You see that, um, with the metal roof, um, piece that's jutting out. And we're also proposing, um, a new 90-square-foot dormer. It's a shed dormer that you see facing the water side, so that's on the back of the historic house. Um, there are several different layers in this house, and I don't need to go into all of the details, but because we're in the FEMA flood zone, all three pieces, the original historic cape, the connecting piece that we're showing with solar panels, and the windmill, all need to be lifted out of the, um, FEMA flood zone. So when I said that the historic house is lifting up four foot two, that's true. The other pieces are at different levels, so they're lifting up a little bit more, and all, the goal is for all of the three to be coplanar, so just wanted to explain that. Um, we did go to the historic board, and they didn't love, um, some of our material choices, so we have additional drawings as well. So this is what we proposed initially, and the historic folks really wanted us to see, um, they really cared about the windmill, and they wanted to make sure we differentiated the materials between the windmill and the lower portion, which is the FEMA portion, so you can see a little slightly different. Thank you for showing the updated drawings. We see the historic, um, windmill lifted up, and then we see some, um, vertical siding below that. Um, I think that's what I wanted to say, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. We'll get to that. Mr. Riley?
Uh, there's also, uh, a small deck added on the water side that puts us a couple of feet closer to the coastal dune. But other than that, I'll be happy to run through the criteria.
Please.
So adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use. Um, we're only adding, as Allison said, 132 square feet, uh, to the footprint. Uh, the principal aspect of the project is lifting the building up, so I think that the, uh, the addition is in an area that, uh, doesn't quite meet the setback on the north side, south side of the property, excuse me. Uh, but we've actually, um, increased the distance. Uh, pardon me. So right now, it, the building is 23 feet from the sideline, and as proposed with the new, uh, addition and the, and the steps, it's 21 feet from the, uh, sideline. The, um, uh, the deck on the, uh, the beach side is cantilevered, so there's no supports going to the ground. Uh, so I think that, uh, considering, uh, the design, we think the site is adequate, uh, for the proposed use. Compatibility of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. Again, we've attached, you know, a third page that shows, uh, the gross floor areas of the eight other homes on, uh, Windmill Lane, and, uh, as luck would have it, we are the smallest house on the street, and our increase in size, we're still the smallest house on the street in terms of gross floor area. That might be because we don't have a basement, and maybe the other ones do. I, I don't know, but anyway, that's the, so we think we are compatible with the neighboring properties. The increase in the, uh, nonconforming nature, we're increasing living area on a nonconforming structure. Under the branch for decision, that's an increase in the intensification of the nonconformity. Uh, and we are, uh, going two feet closer, um, to the sideline where we currently are not compliant, and we're moving two feet closer to the coastal dune, uh, with the deck, although there's, uh, there, there are no supports from the deck, so there's, uh, nothing on the ground moving closer. Suitability of the site. Well, we're in, we're in the floodplain, and the, uh, uh, and so what we're doing is elevating the structure. We're not, uh, changing the grade in a significant way, and so while we're surrounded by coastal dune, the, uh, there's no wetland vegetation or steep slopes that would be affected by the construction. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on neighborhood visual character. So really, the major change is the elevation of the structure, which is just done to bring it into compliance with the FEMA regulations. The goal of the FEMA regulations is to move buildings out of the floodplain in the hopes that, uh, we're, if they're left there in the event of a storm, uh, the structure might be damaged and cause damage to other buildings and property or, uh, people in the neighborhood. So the goal of FEMA is to get the buildings out of the floodplain, uh, to make the situation safer for everyone. That's the major change. So the, um, uh, we think, you know, the modest change to the building with the 132 square feet that Allison's added, uh, for the challenge to have a, a modern kitchen is really insignificant in terms of impact on the neighbor, uh, and neighborhood. So, I mean, the, you know, so we think that, you know, our use is compatible with the neighborhood, no impact on traffic flow and safety, no impact on, uh, litter, and all our utilities are adequate. So we believe that our proposal is not substantially more detrimental, uh, to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand. Oh, ma'am, please head up to the microphone if you'd like to speak in favor. You have up to five minutes. I don't think it's gonna take that long to speak in favor, but just state your name.
Um, Kim Chipman, 21 Little Beach Road. So we are direct butters to this property. Um, and we've looked at the plans, and we're confident that when the project is finished, the house will look great. Um, and our only other comment, uh, is to request that if approved, uh, that the board consider, uh, just replacing restrictions on the work that's performed in the summer months.
We do that routinely, so.
Yes. Okay. Um, then that's really all I have to say.
Okay, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Only in favor. Seeing none. Um, I will read the correspondences. We have a note, oh, we have a note from Christina Basset on March 20th, 2025. She is the, um, Department of, uh, Historical Commission, staff liaison. She tells us that they received the plans, and, um, "The bottom of the windmill has shingles to the ground on your plans, and the CHC signed off on the plan showing vertical siding and shingles. The CHC discussed them, doing a stone or brick, and they came back with vertical siding. They found the home to be historically significant, but the changes did not materially diminish the home's historical significance, so they did not impose a demolition delay." Next, we have a note from, let's see, who is this from? Oh, this is the same. Let's see, this is all historical. Keep going. Anything else?
Um, we should have Judy's.
Oh, yeah. So and then we have our usual note from our health agent. She tells us on May 23rd, um, 2025, that the health, oh, the Board of Health approved the variance. Um, that was actually May 23rd, 2023. Um, so that was already done in the past, so they can have four bedrooms, and the site plan and plans to raise the building, uh, meet FEMA requirements are, I, are, and are, are appropriate. Um, and the Board also states that the property is deemed restricted to four bedrooms, meaning the Board of Health. Okay. Next, we have a note from Conservation, received on March 4th, 2025, and they tell us that the project will be conditioned to meet performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act. No problem with that. Um, I already went through the, um, the historical, so I think we're all set. And anybody here on Microsoft Teams wish to speak against this project or has a question? No. Okay. Questions from the board. Oh, do you need any rebuttal, Mr.?
No.
No, I didn't think so. Okay.
Um, so they, so I just, so I, I'm understanding, 'cause it's not a deal breaker for me either way, but you've, so you, after the, the Historical Commission's comments about the, the boarding rather than the shingles, uh, on the lower part of the windmill is what you're presenting to us?
Well, what, what happened was, we went there. They indicated that they wanted to show, uh, have Allison make a change so that the, uh, windmill, as it existed, would still be shown as a separate structure. There was a discussion about brick, which of course is very expensive, uh, and Allison came up with vertical siding. They didn't, they didn't say it had to be brick. They just said, "We want you to show that there's a difference, that keeping the original windmill separate," and that's what Allison came up with.
Okay. Uh, and, I mean, I, for me personally, I, I think I could go either way. I think they both look very good. Uh, and then the only other thing I wondered, Allison, was, um, do, have you planned where to put mechan- where you're gonna put mechanicals, uh, on, on this, uh, structure?
It's a good question. They won't be on the ground because of the FEMA requirement.
Right. They're gonna have to be elevated above the, the.
That's right. So there, um, there are some small decks. I think they'll, we'll try to locate them on those decks. If we have to, it would be a wall-mounted system away from, um, I'm sorry, we haven't got that far, but we have a couple of decks on two different sides. I think we could.
Certainly not gonna be within a setback so that you'd need to come back.
It's not gonna be a setback, and it can't be on the ground, so it, it's, it's gonna be on one of those decks.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thanks.
Okay. Paul?
Uh, just to clarify, um, on the site plan, there's an indication that the, uh, proposed ridge, uh, would be 32.6 feet, uh, but, uh, at another location on the site plan, it says the new foundation, the ridge, would be 31.9. Is, do you, do you know which one the ridge is actually going to be?
Here, you wanna come up? What's the question again, Paul?
I think, I think in the bottom left-hand corner, it says proposed, and it indicates the, uh, proposed ridge elevation is 32.6, but up, uh,
Right.
slightly above there, it indicates the ridge is elevation 31.9.
We, we can't find that.
We're gonna put it on the screen.
It's on the site.
Right underneath, where it says existing bedroom, four-bedroom dwelling?
Oh, good change. Where is it again?
Uh, yeah. Right there. 31.9 there, and, and down below, it's, uh, 32.6.
Right. Well, we'll have to ask the engineer to explain.
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Clark. Like to take a stab at this?
For the record. Um, yeah, the plan that's, that Mr. Riley has shows 32.6 in both spots, but, uh, there was a plan revision. Um, if you could pan down to what that revision was, it, um, not sure why.
I can't read this too far away.
Uh, I. Yeah, I, I, I think what happened was, um, we had the first floor higher, and, uh, Sarah came back and said that, uh, you can't raise it more than what the bylaw allows, which is two feet. Um, so we changed it in one spot and didn't change it on the other. So that, that's why the plan we have in front of us is the original plan. It says 32.6. It's 31.9.
It'll be 31.9.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions, Paul?
Well, just so I understand it, so, uh, it's incorrect that the, on the one that's more towards the middle of the page. It, it is going to be 32.6, or it is going to be 31.9?
It's 31.9.
31.9.
31.9.
31.9, okay. All right. Um, I don't have any other questions.
Three questions.
Uh, my only question is just, just for curiosity. Um, the, the garage and the door into the basement?
I wouldn't call it a garage.
Oh, it's not? Okay, well, whatever the space is.
Allison can describe it better.
Any, any access to the, to the first floor from in there, or is it, you have to come out and go up the steps?
Oh, from, to the lower level. The only access is from the outside, from that door and the overhead door that you see there from the outside. There's no access from the inside.
Inside, okay. All right, just out of curiosity. Thank you. And Steve?
I have no other questions.
And so just to clarify, which design do you want for the windmill? Which are you applying for? 'Cause we have both, and I, my understanding is that we don't even have jurisdiction over the, you know, that issue.
The vertical siding.
You want the vertical siding?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Diplomatic today.
Well, I mean, that was, one request that Historical Commission made was they wanted us to, to continue to show
Yes.
the original windmill, and they thought that if we ran the shingles all the way to the ground, you know, it wouldn't be the original windmill, so.
And so you're deciding to comply with that?
Right.
Yep, that's good. So you're exercising your discretion. You don't have to, but you are. Very nice. Okay, with that, um, Paul? Close the hearing and move into deliberations?
Yes. I got it. I'll move to, uh, close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Uh, Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Lee?
Um, I, I think this looks great. I think that, um, you know, because of where it is, you have to comply with FEMA. You've gotta raise it up. I like the fact that you're not changing it a whole lot. I think the addition is going to be a nice addition. Um, so I, I, I think it's, it meets our criteria. I think, um, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very nice, and, um, a nice addition to the neighborhood.
And I, I have a cue from our building commissioner who would like to be part of the deliberations. Yes, sir?
I just wanna make one comment. Um, they're gonna be elevating the structure. That doesn't remove the structure from the floodplain. It just puts it on a FEMA-compliant foundation with compliant floor elevations. Just a minor point.
Yes, thank you. And, uh, Steve, deliberations?
Um, well, I agree with Lee. I think this is a nice project. It looks like a very complicated project, um, but I, you know, as necessary as it is, I think it, I think it would be nice.
Yeah. And Paul?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues. I think the only suggestion I would make is that we revise the site plan so that that bottom left-hand side says 31.9.
Yeah, and David Veach, deliberations?
Yeah, um, it, this looks like a really good project. I mean, it really honors what's there. Uh, it, um, the name Chandler rings a bell in, in the neighborhood.
Yeah, they own the property next door.
I know, and by the, and I very, and I very much like the job that Allison did with the house next door, and, and this is also really nice. This is gonna look really well and a fit.
That's probably why she got the job. Um, yeah, so I don't have anything to add. I, I like it a lot. I'm looking forward to seeing it when it's done. And with that, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that, uh, all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June 15th and September 15th, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Thank you.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
All votes yes?
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Lastly, we have Damon and Lisa Harrell, application 25-010, 66 Athelma Drive, care of James N. Norcross. And Sarah will read the application.
Application number 25-010, Damon and Lisa Harrell, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 66 Athelma Owners of property located at sixty-six Athelma Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessors Map, eleven G Block thirty, Lot G thirty-three. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and garage, and the construction of a new dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the Second Except Clause of Section Six of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of special permit. The existing building coverage is one thousand five hundred nine square feet, and the proposed building coverage is two thousand four hundred forty-one square feet, where two thousand nine hundred square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains ninety point eight seven feet of frontage, where one hundred feet is required. The lot contains twenty-four thousand one hundred square feet in the R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section Six, and Section five B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Norcross. Third time's a charm, perhaps?
We hope so. Thank you very much, Jamie Norcross, representing Damon Lisa Harrell. Lisa Harrell is here this afternoon in the back. Damon Harrell is participating remotely. We were here back the beginning of December, so as opposed to a full presentation, it seems like it probably the best use of time. I'll just go through the changes.
Please do that.
Okay, thank you. So just a real brief overview, again, we were here at the beginning of December with a different design. Primary objections raised from board members at that time related to overall gross floor area and massing of the structure. There are also, as you probably remember, a number of neighbors who wrote in and spoke in opposition. Following the December meeting, the Harrels had numerous conversations with their neighbors to discuss the concerns they raised relative to the project. This included two Zoom meetings with the Harrels and a large number of neighbors in attendance, one of which was, the Harrels had their architect come to discuss changes and concerns with the neighbors. Subsequent to these meetings, the Harrels and the design teams made several changes to the prior design, which we believe are quite substantial. And Sarah's beaten me to the punch. So on the left, you'll see that's from the prior design, on the right is the current design. So first change, number one, previously, there was a bedroom and living area above the garage. That has been removed on the left-hand side. You can see that results in the removal of those dormers. That also results in the height of the garage has been lowered by about two feet overall, and the pitch has been changed as well. Sarah, if you don't mind, go into the next slide, please. So again, the left is the prior design, the right's the current design. And so this is the north and south elevation, so the two side elevations. And so by removing the room above the garage, it creates a, another which we think is substantial change to the structure. So previously, where you had the connector, it's, because you need to access the garage space, you had the connector that went all the way across here. That's been removed. The dormer's gone, the connector's gone. Again, the garage, which essentially went to almost the same height as the house previously in that design, has all been removed. The windows have been removed. And that affects, we would suggest significantly, both the north and south, the side elevations on both sides by removing those elements from the structure. The height, as I mentioned, the garage has been reduced by about two feet in height. The house, the larger portion of the structure, has been reduced by about fourteen inches, just about over a foot, by further reducing the grade on the structure. So that has been brought down as well. One thing I'd like to mention, and I'm sorry, Sarah, if you don't mind going back to the front elevation. So as the board knows, in Chatham, you measure the height by average grade plane, which is you take the average from the four sides and figure out what that is, and then you determine what your thirty feet is, as to how high the house can be. Our height right now is twenty-seven feet and change, just over twenty-seven feet. And that includes the rear slope as part of the gross, the grade plane, grade plane calculation, which, as you've heard on prior presentations, somewhat skews the overall height numbers. So I did want to point out that if you're standing in front of this structure at that elevation and that grade, the height of the structure is just about twenty-four feet. And it's also worth mentioning that the street elevation is about six to eight feet higher than where the house is going to sit. So meaning, if you're standing at the street looking down at the structure, which is, the garage is seventy-five feet from the street, the house is another fifteen or so feet back from that, you're looking down six feet at a twenty-four-foot-tall structure. So again, I think just to show that it's twenty-seven feet and change is how we calculate the height. But if, again, looking at it from the street, I think it's an even lower number when it would actually be constructed in terms of how you're going to look at it from a visual standpoint. The overall gross floor area of the home has been significantly reduced through a combination of two primary factors. The first is the removal of the bedroom and living space over the garage. That was, I think, about five hundred square feet of gross floor area previously. That has all been removed. I'd also point out, we were previously increasing from four bedrooms to five, now we're staying at four bedrooms. So remaining with the existing number of bedrooms at the house. The basement area has been converted. A large portion down there is going to have a ceiling height below the required height that would permit it to be used as living space. So it's just going to be for storage, six foot six or below. Mr. Harrell, as you may remember, is quite tall, about six foot eight. So really, for them, it's quite unusable, other than just using it for storage. And so we think that's a significant change in terms of the gross floor area number in the basement as well. Overall, our gross floor area for this current application is four thousand three hundred eighty-five square feet, which represents a reduction of nine hundred and fifty-eight square feet from the prior application. Just lastly, a couple smaller changes, but changes I think are worth mentioning. The roof pitch at the garage and front bedroom gables was modified from eleven to, eleven over twelve to ten over twelve pitch, which not only lowered the ridge elevation, but the massing as well. And this was a specific concern raised by at least one of the neighbors during their discussions. And lastly, and Sarah, I'm sorry to ask you again, if you don't mind going to the next slide for the side profile. This, right, this element right here, this retaining wall, has been removed, and the stairs, which we think also reduces massing, is seen from that elevation. So now you just look through underneath the deck. And I think that is, again, an element that reduces the overall massing and scale of the project. Instead of going through the criteria, again, because we were here a couple months ago, I'm just going to touch on two items of the criteria, and then we can go along to any questions that you may have. Number two, compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The reduction in gross floor area brings the proposed house more in line with the gross floor area numbers for homes in this neighborhood. While we're still in the larger size for the neighborhood, this lot accommodates a larger structure while still maintaining compatibility. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, the lots on the pond are generally larger in size than the inland lots in this neighborhood. Also, the fact that the property butts the pond on one side, as opposed to being located inland, means that a structure can be larger in size without detracting from its compatibility for the property and the neighborhood overall. And then, criteria number five, impact of scale setting and mass and neighborhood visual character. Just a couple elements to point out. The house, the garage section, which is the closest and also the smallest portion of the house, will be located seventy-five feet from Athelma Drive. And by utilizing existing grade that slopes away from the street, it reduces the height and mass of the structure. The house is only five feet higher than the existing house. You can't see over the existing house if you go out to the property, and so the additional height is not removing a view that currently exists. This project also maintains a view corridor on the sides of both houses that are there now. So again, it's two structures on the property now, but they, it's basically taking up the same footprint in terms of the width with the one structure now, and those view corridors along both sidelines are going to remain. Lastly, the removal of the room over the garage not only reduces the gross floor area for the structure, but also reduces the exterior mass of the structure. And we think this is a significant change, both as seen from Athelma Drive and as seen from the north and south elevations on the property. So lastly, I know there's still, unfortunately, despite my client's efforts, there are a number of letters in opposition. I'd say less than last time, so we have made some progress in that regard. However, and I know change is difficult, change can be unpopular, but I think ultimately, as you know, that the consideration, is this substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And I think with these changes, I do not believe it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think we've done, my clients have really gone to great lengths to work with folks, work with their design team, to come up with something that reduces the massing. And when all is said and done, I think it really is a structure that is compatible for the property and the neighborhood. And with that, we'd happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here, our Microsoft teams, that wishes to speak in favor? Just favor? No. So with regard to the letters, I have ten. I know the health agent is not here, and I will read hers. However, we have nine other letters. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak instead of me reading their letter? No. Okay, so I will read the nine letters and the one from the health agent right now. So the health agent tells us on three twenty-five twenty-five that she reviewed the plan for the property, and it was ordered to connect to sewer, and was granted an extension for connection with the condition that it remains vacant. The current plan to rebuild and connect to sewer is acceptable.
Madam Chair, you did, you did have one woman who raised her hand.
I just have a question.
I'll get to the questions in a moment. If it's a question, you don't wish to speak in favor, correct? Okay, we're going to get to questions. Okay, next, we have a note from Kathy and Michael Frito, received, let's see, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. And they are at ten Barbara Drive in Chatham. Our neighbors, our neighborhood met with the Harrels via Zoom on twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-five to discuss our concerns. We've been waiting to hear back from them on the modifications and to make sure we're all in alignment. However, we did not hear back and received the letter with the new hearing date for the revised proposal. We are surprised, and we, we want to make sure our concerns were met. We do acknowledge there were some changes in the overall square footage. The adjustments with depth, roof pitch are minimal at best. The reduction in square footage largely comes from the internal modifications, such as removing the bonus room and reducing usable basement to crawl space, then significantly altering the external scale and visual bulk of the home. It appears they focused on square footage and did not take into consideration the neighborhood's concerns of the overall size, mass of the home. This has always been an issue, and we hoped that, after we spoke with them, they would take this into consideration. It's worth noting that the newest plans state the measurements of the previous home at thirty-one thirty-three feet, which is incorrect. The original home was twenty-three eighty-two. I want to make sure that this was called out as it's significant. The home's visual mass and perceived scale still appear disproportionately large relative to the surrounding homes. Our concerns remain focused primarily on the architectural massing and visual harmony of the proposed construction. With existing neighborhood aesthetics and scale, our neighborhood does not feel like the changes have satisfied our concerns, which have been voiced at the beginning of the call in December. In closing, we ask you to please consider the impact of families on Athelma Drive, Barbara Drive, Wilford Road, as well as other homes on the pond that will be faced with this enormous structure. Thank you for taking our concerns into consideration. Next, we have a note from Michael Page, and he's at nine Athelma Drive in Chatham, received on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you for considering the neighborhood's concerns regarding the proposed construction at sixty-six Athelma. After reviewing the most recent revisions submitted, I wish to provide a continued feedback, which I share with several of the neighborhood residents. We acknowledge and appreciate the property owners have significantly reduced the proposed house gross floor footage to forty-three eighty-five, which statistically aligns closer to neighborhood norms. Specifically, this new size is slightly below the largest home at forty-five fifty and roughly within acceptable statistical range with two point one six standard deviations above our neighborhood's average of twenty-eight hundred. However, despite these numerical reductions, we remain concerned about the overall mass and visual dominance of the proposed structure. The adjustments in width and depth and roof pitch are modest, and the reduction in square footage largely comes from internal modifications, such as removing the bonus room and reducing usable basement space, rather than significantly altering the extent, external scale, or visual bulk of the house. Thus, we, while the statistical size is now more in keeping with the neighborhood, the home's visual mass and perceived scale still appear disproportionately large relative to the surrounding homes. Our concerns remain focused primarily on the architectural massing and visual harmony of the proposed construction with existing neighborhood aesthetics and scale. We respectfully request that the zoning board continue to consider these visual and architectural factors in your evaluation, encourage additional design adjustments that will meaningfully reduce the mass and prominence of the home to ensure neighborhood compatibility. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Next, we have a note from Susan Clifford, one twenty-eight Wilford Road, on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. She tells us she agrees with Michael Page. Everything he said in his letter would, and I would just add, that at a Zoom meeting held between the neighbors and the Harrels, we agree, the Harrels agreed to meet with us again before submitting their new plans. That never happened, which leads me to believe there is very little difference in the new submission. I respectfully request that the zoning board reject the plan for sixty-six Athelma. Next, we have a note from Allison Coleman and Lisa Bosley from six Athelma. And they tell us that on March twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, with respect to the current version of the plan submitted for a new home on sixty-six, we are writing to express our concurrence with the excellent letter written by Michael Page after consultation with neighbors. It appears that the changes made to the plans are mostly interior and eliminate bedroom and crawl, putting in crawl space. From the exterior neighborhood perspective, the overall mass of the house has changed very little. It's still too massive, and compared to other houses in the neighborhood, if built, will change the neighborhood's visual character. Although the gross square footage in the current plans is somewhat reduced from the last set of plans, still not compatible with the neighborhood properties, as it's almost three times the size of the current house on the property in one point four and one point seven, times the size of the immediate adjacent homes, fifty-four and ten Barbara, two point four times the size of the house across the street at sixty-three. The house, the height indicates, indicated in the proposed plan are just under the maximum height allowed, which also loom over the adjacent properties, which are one and one and a half stories. Neighborhoods like ours are fast disappearing in Chatham. Many mourn their loss, as Chatham becomes more of a town with enormous investment properties that are barely used, allowing sixty-six Athelma to become the first demo in the fall, to fall in our neighborhood would be a tragedy. It's up to the board to rein in this type of overdevelopment in few areas of Chatham that have not already been lost to similar out-of-scale projects. In conclusion, it doesn't meet the zoning board's criteria for compatibility and neighborhood character, and we urge the board to deny the request. And as approving it would set precedent that could erode the neighborhood's charm and cohesion. Next, we have a note from Deborah Nicholson, twenty-one Carolyn Drive, received on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. This email is documentation of my support for Mike Page's letter dated March twenty-four, which summarizes the most recent neighborhood thoughts with regard to the newest proposed structure. In particular, I'd like to note that our recent call with the Harrels and their design team made a distinct, I made it a distinct point that while we have been using a number of measurements, gross square footage, net footage, to discuss neighborhood concerns with this house, there is no magic number that would necessarily address our concerns. Rather, one should be able to look at the house and feel that it's visually consistent with the majority of other homes in the neighborhood. It's not just about the numbers. That said, I agree with the neighborhood's concern that the home's visual mass and perceived scale will appear disproportionately large relative to the surrounding homes. Our concerns continue and remain focused on the architecturally massing and visual harmony of the proposed structure with existing neighborhood aesthetics and scale. I respectfully ask that the board consider these concerns in your evaluation. Design adjustments that meaningfully reduce the mass and prominence of the proposed home are requested to make it more consistent with our homes in the neighborhood. Next, we have a note received March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, from David Mallows on eighty-eight Athelma. He'd like to say that he also agrees with Mike Page's letter, and would like to add that applicants didn't seem to really take the neighborhood, neighbors' concerns to heart. If they did, they would have made more of an effort to shrink the mass size of their home in other ways than just by reducing usable portions of the basement. Then we have a note from Joan Anne Zimmer, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. She's at twenty Barbara Lane, and she'd like to go on the record as being in agreement with the letter submitted by Mike Page of nine Athelma Drive in Chatham, and wants the ZBA to know that regarding the proposed dwelling at sixty-six Athelma Drive in Chatham. Joan and Elisa Pupura from 54 Athelma Drive tell us on March 25, 2025 that they're writing in response to the above application, which is 25-010. And our neighborhood, our neighbor, Mike Page, has shared with us his letter and to your board conveying his careful analysis and opinions. We concur with Mike's views. It's unfortunate that the applicants didn't come back to the neighborhood residence with their new changes, as I believe it was agreed that they would do so in December. This could have saved them work and expense of new plans, which don't accomplish the intended goals. The Athelma neighborhood appreciates the board's careful consideration of this issue. That concludes the current, no? Okay, then I also have a note from Lindsay Clark, March 25, 2025. I understand the zoning board is reviewing the revised proposal for 66 Athelma. Our neighbor Mike attached a letter. I want to share with the board that, board members, that we agree with what he has wrote in his letter, and we live at 63 Athelma. Lindsay Clark and Brian Van Y. That concludes the letters. Now, is there anybody here with a question or wishes to speak against? That I have not read your letter? If so, please raise your hand if you have a question. Yeah, you have to wait till you go up to the mic. If you have a question, you have to go up there, state your name. We don't bite.
Hi, I'm Joanne Silver. I live on 20 Barbara Drive. I'm just wondering if you have a picture of the pond side elevation? And were there any changes made to it?
No, there weren't any changes made to the pond side, so we didn't do a comparison of that.
Okay, we can put a picture of that up, though?
Thanks.
Sure. Yep, no changes made, so that makes sense that there was no addressing that. Okay, so anybody else here on Microsoft Teams that I have not read their letter has a question or wishes to speak against? Let's make sure there's no one on Microsoft Teams. I don't think so. Just to double check. Yeah, just to see. Nope. Okay, so now, any rebuttal?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, if I may. And some of the numbers in the letters are incorrect, but I don't think it's really necessary to get into that. But the overall, I guess, theme is that neighbors felt there was not a meaningful reduction in the mass and prominence of the home. And I guess we just respectfully disagree with that analysis from the neighbors. I think folks talk about just the interior changes, but the changes to the room above the garage is a very substantial change. Not only are they giving away a fifth bedroom that they would be entitled to under the regulations in Chatham, but that overall impact on the massing of the home is significant, both from Athelma and from the north and south elevations. When you talk about massing, we have a home that's, as measured from the average grade plane, is 27 feet. Its closest point to Athelma Drive, and we're talking about neighborhood visual character, is 75 feet away. So I don't think we have any issues with massing on the street. I understand our largest elevation, or the portion of the home that's largest, is the rear, which looks out toward the pond. As you may remember from the last hearing, my client had drone photos taken of homes surrounding the pond. And these walkouts with a sort of a two-story element are consistent with other properties around the pond. Whereas it's visible from this particular vantage point, is visible from the pond essentially. And the pond's over 100 feet away. So if you look at that, yeah, it's a great photo right there. You can see. So there's heavy vegetation where significant distance from the pond. And yes, it is visible from the pond and some homes surrounding the pond. But in no way do I think the massing is overwhelming. And based on these photographs of other properties around the pond, in fact, I think it's consistent with the homes around the pond. So again, we respect the opinions. We just have a fundamental disagreement. There hasn't been a substantial change, and with that, we'd happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll do questions. Steve, questions?
Okay, I guess, I guess I would like to just verify a few things. I think I know the answers to most of them, but I just wanted to verify so we got it on the record. If I'm looking at the site plan, the, to me, it appears that the width of the new home is about equal to the combined width of the existing house and garage.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't have the exact number, but we're.
No, but it's pretty close.
Yeah, very, yeah.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask you also is, I just want to verify some numbers. I'm going off your comparison chart. The basement ground floor area is now about, it says 997 feet, so about 1,000 square feet.
Of gross floor.
Of gross floor of the basement. I just wanted to verify that that's correct. And have you, has anybody developed any sort of landscape plan yet for the front of the house, between the road and the house? Because that may help.
Andrew Garrelly is on the Microsoft Teams. Andrew, do you have something you'd be able to share?
Do we know that he heard you at all?
I was giving a pause.
A sign of life?
We can.
If he raises his hand, we'll come back to him.
Sure, yeah, I know he's, obviously, he's there, well.
No, we can't do that from the audience. Cannot be done. You cannot talk from the audience. No, you cannot.
All right, we can circle back with that if Andrew's right, but there was a plan done.
Just because that might help, you know.
I couldn't find the unmute. I'm sorry, I couldn't find the unmute.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna just restate the question.
I was just asking if there had been any sort of landscape plan drawn up yet that might soften the front of the house.
There's not a planting plan yet because I've been waiting for the rest of the plan to develop in order to proceed with the planting plan. But I think you have, I don't know, Jamie, do they have the landscape draft plan that shows the driveway?
No, just the David's site plan. But I do know, Andrew, if you could speak to perhaps some of the trees that were going to be saved as part of that might be helpful.
Yes, so the previous time that we revised the plan, I revised it such that we moved the driveway to the southern corner of the lot where the current driveway is. Yeah, so, yeah, it looks similar to that. I actually drafted that, those walls and everything there. So at the street level, if you were standing in the road and directly in front of the middle of the house, the elevation there is elevation 66. So it's only 16 feet lower than the ridge line. And the reason why is because we have the driveway going downhill. We have a retaining wall that tucks the driveway down low. The garage has entered at that level. Then what we've done that's very significant in this particular plan is the house has been lowered in relationship to the garage. So the whole ridge line is, has been lowered in relation to the floor of the garage. You have to step down into the house from the garage, and that significantly brought down the ridge line. The whole house is down, is set lower into the ground than, than the previous version significantly. And that allowed me to remove the retaining wall that was otherwise needed at the rear, the southwest corner of the house. And the reason why we needed it before partly was to do with the, keeping the grade steady around the house. But because we lowered the house, it makes it match the ground much, much better in that regard. So when you look at it from the side, we no longer have to have the retaining wall holding up the soil behind the house. It's just a natural grade now, or unretained grade. Yeah, you can see it, you can see that now. And then underneath the deck is all open. There's no, there's no skirting underneath the deck in the back. So if you look at the two, at the top of the page, those two elevations, that's significantly reduced. If you just look at it, you can see it significantly reduced the bulk. And this was done through the landscape site plan.
This is a question about plantings, and we are off topic now. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you. I apologize, but we're gonna do that. So.
Yeah, I haven't done a planting.
Okay, so there's your answer. Lee? Oh, no, Steve, any more questions?
No, go ahead.
No? Okay. Lee, questions?
I think, I think I'm all set with questions right now.
Okay, Paul, questions?
Let me just see if I understood. Andrew was just talking about the ridge elevation being lower with respect to the house. But in fact, the ridge elevation is, is going to be higher, isn't it?
I'm sorry, what's the question, Paul?
Ridge elevation on the new house is going to be higher than the existing ridge elevation.
Yes, it's higher than the existing by about five feet. I think he was speaking to the prior plan in terms of a comparison. It's been reduced.
Okay, he was saying that it's lower than it was proposed the last time around, but it's still higher.
Yes, it's about five feet higher than what's there now. Yep.
And in terms of its location on the lot vis a vis the existing house, would you say it's about two feet, goes back two feet more perhaps than the existing house?
Closer to the pond?
Yes.
That would probably be a good estimate.
But really, it really doesn't go back on the lot much at all when you look at it.
No, not from what's there now, no. It was just, I think it's a little confusing at times because our prior plan, the very first plan you saw was significantly closer to Athelma. And here, it's been more in line with the existing house.
The area that I'm trying to get a feel for is when you come up on Athelma, which I've done now a number of times. They come up Barbara, rather, excuse me. And you look at the lot and they look at the house. I'm trying to get a feel for how much bigger it's going to look than what's there now. I realize it's going to be different in design, and it's going to be different in width because it's going to be bigger in width. And it's also going to be five feet higher. So what are you going to see when you come over the, over Barbara Drive and look at that house towards Emery Pond?
Well, I think the first thing you're going to see is the garage, which is actually significantly lower than the house because that's the portion that's closest to the street. And that's the smallest part of the structure. I mean, there is, I was, drove by there again as well today, and there's significant vegetation along the property lines as well. So I mean, I don't think it's, there's probably be some visibility, but as you drive by, I mean, I guess there'll be a little snippet as you go through, but I don't think it's going to be overwhelming. And what you are going to see is going to be significantly down the hill on that lot. It's going to reduce that additional height, in my opinion.
But when you say it's going to be significantly down the hill, it's only going to be two feet different from what's existing now.
No, I understand that, yeah, but just in general. It's not like it's at the 25-foot setback. I mean, the house is 90 feet from the street.
What kind of work are you going to be doing on the site itself in terms of moving dirt or excavation?
That is beyond my pay grade to answer that question. Andrew, is that something you'd be able to answer?
Yes, and as I mentioned before, the driveway is getting cut into the, into the earth so that it lowers the driveway going into the garage. So the retaining wall you see in the middle of the, of the plan, everything north of that retaining wall is pretty close to existing grade when it's all said and done. We're preserving all of the trees north of that wall. The ones that we're not going to be able to keep is the ones that's right. There's one really close to the garage, and there's like two over there. And then we're able to keep the ones that are nearer to the street. The driveway comes in behind some of the trees, but we do have to take out three trees to make the driveway, so inside of the driveway. But everything in front of that wall from the street to the wall is pretty much the same grade. And so we'll be able to put shrubs in there, and it, because of the wall, it drops down. The top of that wall is elevation 62. The driveway is at elevation, the walkway in front of that wall is at elevation 59.5. So that, that's a 30-inch, 30-inch wall, so the driveway sunk. So anything being parked in the driveway is down low, so it's easily screened by just shrubs. But we'll, we're able to put, we can put trees all the way across that if you'd like, you know, and really screen the house from the road if that's what people want. And if the homeowners agree to that. But we can, we can plant anything there to really screen this. Certainly, the driveway is going to be well-screened because it's also sunk. And of course, we would have nice landscaping in front of the house itself. We're preserving the trees around, along the north property line. You can see by the contour lines that those trees are being preserved. It's a shame my draft plan isn't there because it has the red X's in the few trees that are coming out. But yeah, it's, it can be substantially screened, and the same with the south side.
Jamie, the only, the only house that I see in this area that would look somewhat like this, I think, is the one at 46 Barbara Drive that you see on the left-hand side as you're coming up.
Yes, yeah, the blue, the blue shutters, I think.
Is that the, is that the only one that would, that this would be similar to this?
In terms of design or size?
In terms of size and design.
There's one, another one on.
Just one second. We have an idea that might help Paul. Sarah?
Andrew, if you'd like to email me the draft plan real quick, I can put that up on the screen.
Okay, what email address? Okay, I shall do that.
Well, I think it was 14 Jeanette. That would be the largest structure in the neighborhood, at least in terms of gross floor area. It's 4,500 square feet. I mean, I guess the design is unique for the neighborhood, but I'd say a lot of the designs are unique in that neighborhood. I don't think there's sort of a common pattern in terms of the way the homes.
There's certainly, certainly a lot of different houses. That's correct. You mean 14 Jeanette or 14 Carolyn?
14 Jeanette.
I don't see a 14 Jeanette.
It's on the gross floor area analysis that we.
Yeah, the 14.
It's on the corner of Jeanette and Carolyn.
Okay, all right, that's, that's still Jeanette, I see. Okay.
Yeah, and then the only other thing I'd say is I think you'd also, in terms of what's the neighborhood, I think you have to account for the other homes around the pond is really part of our neighborhood because at least from the back visual, that's what we're comparing to in terms of size and style as opposed to other homes that are inland lots that are just, I mean, again, the lot, the lots on the pond, I think, are a little bit different, a little bit unique.
And by the ones, lots on the pond, are you talking about the ones that are on Athelma?
Well, Athelma and around Emery Pond, over on Old Queen Anne and what is it, Agnes? I mean, I get it, we're going to look at, what's, what are you going to see visually? Those are the properties you're going to see.
But not, not so much on Athelma, though?
No, I wouldn't say not so much on Athelma, no. I mean, there are some homes that are, I guess, a bit larger in size than the average, but not, not this type of architectural style, no.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, and if we get that email, we'll, we'll put it up.
Excuse me, could I, could I get that email again? I'm not getting it right.
S. Clark, C-L-A-R-K.
Yeah.
At chatham-ma.gov, I think government.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. David Veach, deliberations? Questions, I'm sorry.
Questioning still. So I, I'm going to try to follow up a little bit with Andrew with respect to trees and things. I've got the Google Street Maps image in front of me here. And, and I've got, you know, looking at Dave Clark's plan. And so it sounds to me, Andrew, that you're saying that right now where the, in, in front of the current garage or on the street side of the current garage, there are two trees. It looks to me like, based on your description, that the one furthest to the north, which looks to be a little bit more significant, is planned to remain. Is that correct?
Andrew, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was sending the email.
Yeah.
What was the question?
So I'm, I'm questioning you more about the trees because I'm looking at the, uh, street view, um, of, of this location. And I'm looking at the, um, the, um, site plan, Dave Clark's site plan. And I see some trees indicated on the site plan. And, and I'm just, make sure that we're speaking the same language. What I thought I understood you to say was that, uh, everything, basically, all the trees north of the retaining walls that you're showing on the, uh, northeast side of the driveway are, the plan is for those to remain. One of those being, there are a couple of trees, existing trees right now, they're very close to the existing garage.
Yeah.
It's looked to me, at least based on the site plan, that the tree that's furthest to the north, if you will, there is, is quite a bit larger than the other one. Is that the one that you think you're gonna be able to save? Of those two next to the existing garage?
Yeah, if you, she just put up the, the plan. So you see the red Xs? The red Xs are the trees that are coming out. So there's one, it's.
Okay, that's.
There's one red X.
Yeah, I see those, so those.
Really close to the garage.
Those are the ones that are, that are scheduled to come out. I can see that, they're within the, the layout of the, of the driveway as shown, the new driveway. But that other cluster, uh, up to the, uh, north of the, of the entry to the driveway, your, the plan is to keep, maintain those, keep those trees, correct?
Correct.
And then what I also believe you said was all the, the trees then, I'm not seeing the Xs up, I'm not seeing any Xs up. Oh, okay, I see the one next to the existing garage. So the other trees north of the, um, retaining wall there are, uh, you're planning to, to, uh, keep, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Great, thank you. That helps me. I mean, you know, I can get a little better of the visual based on that. So the only other thing that I'm, I'm, or one thing that I'm, I'm curious, a couple of things. One, Jay, I was a little, aren't, can you have a garage floor that's higher than the main floor of a house?
You can nowadays. There's no requirement. There used to be a requirement. Have a four-inch curb.
Yeah.
That's not in the code anymore.
Okay, great, fine. And then, um, the only other thing, I'm just so that I, for my own clarification. You know, looking at our maps and the town, the, the maps online, I, I'm, I'm, just, someone, correct me if I'm wrong here. I'm gonna say what I believe to understand to be the situation. Because we got a letter from, uh, Mr. Mallows at eighty-eight. And I'm, I'm thinking that eighty-eight is the lot. That, that is now two lots as shown up there. And eighty-eight, the address eighty-eight is on the southern half of there, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That was our lot, we wouldn't be here.
That's, well, no, that's true. You would have the frontage, wouldn't you?
Yeah, we would have the frontage. No, it's about where the, sort of the jog, I think, is.
Isn't it where the jog is, there's a, a line separating the, the two lots.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I don't think I have any other que, I mean, not that I can remember now, thanks.
All right, great. So, so just for clarification for anybody at home or in the audience. So this house is five feet under what it could be. You could have asked for a thirty-foot, but it's twenty-five, correct?
Uh, no, technically, our, uh, from the average grade plan, the house is twenty-seven, or would be twenty-seven.
Oh, what?
When I was talking about twenty-four, that's looking at it from in front of the home. Because the grade drops off so significantly that skews the average.
So it's three feet lower than what is the lot?
Correct.
Three feet lower?
Yep.
And it's no longer the largest house in the area, is it?
It is not.
No. And have you heard anything from the people across the pond? And I don't mean inland, I mean, across your pond?
No.
That are gonna actually look at this?
We have not heard any.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nope.
And, uh, let me see. And so when you first came here, I don't even know what that date was, you were asking for a gross floor area of fifty-six ninety-six. Then you came back with fifty-three forty-three. And now your current house is forty-three eighty-five with four bedrooms versus five, right?
That's correct.
So you've reduced the gross floor area of this house by thirteen eleven square feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, um, and the only reason they are even here, right, is because you, you're missing nine feet of frontage.
That's correct. Our lot size in terms of acreage or square footage is actually conforming. It's just the frontage.
And it's even a little bit bigger than it needs to be.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, let's see what else. I just wanted to clarify that so everybody knows what we're dealing with here. And it's, okay. So all that being said, um, I don't have any further questions. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Excuse me, David seconds and votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
And as do I. Okay, deliberations. Well, David.
Well, I'll try to be brief, um, because I think I indicated the last time that, that, um, I, it was something that I could support. And I think that the changes they've made, they've made further reductions. And, and I know there was some, there were some of the letters kind of didn't seem to feel that those were significant changes. I, I do think they're significant changes. I mean, certainly giving up the, the, um, room above the garage and changing the, 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 the design of, of the roof of the garage, I think helps quite a bit. And giving up full basement space for call space, um, you know, I, I mean, you, you tend to use all the space that somehow, between storage or anything else. So I think those are significant reductions are made. And I, I'm not, I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't think, and I think, and I've been, you know, while we're talking here, I've been looking at that street view and looking at the street view. And, and I, I think that, that, that as Jamie has presented, I think that this, I feel in my, in my mind, in my judgment, when this project is completed, it, it is going to be one of the larger houses in the neighborhood. But I don't think that it, the visual impact is going to be jarring, particularly here. And I think because it's down away from the road, even with, just with those exist, they've got existing trees and they've talked about maybe planting other trees if that would make people happier. I, I think it helps to, uh, offset, you know, it's not, and you're driving down the road, you're not like, you know, looking that closely at, at this location. So I don't, I can't, I can't come to the, and, and so the first thing I'd, I said I was gonna be brief, I'm sorry. When a, a proposal comes to us such as this one that is designed in, and even the first design was, and they've reduced from there, that meets the dimensional requirements of our bylaw. And meets, the, the, and this lot meets the size requirements and, and, and everything else. And in this case, that lack of nine feet of frontage is the reason that we're here. And I have to say, I, in, when I'm looking at the, those kinds of situations, I'm inclined to, to, to be maybe a little looser than I might under other circumstances. And I, and, and to me, this situation, I understand that the neighbors are, neighbors are still projecting this is gonna, you know, be a horrible thing. I don't think that's gonna be the case. And I certainly can't in, in, in my official position, anything to say that this would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I need, I have to come down on the property owner's rights on this, side on this one. It really seems to be important to me, so that's the way I feel.
Thank you. Steve, what say you?
Well, I'm a little bit torn, but, but because this is gonna be the second largest house in the neighborhood. However, um, if you go by the gross, gross floor area, about twenty or twenty-five percent of it is, is underground because of the topography of the land. So you, you're not even gonna see, um, a, almost a quarter of the, of the floor area. So the part that you will see is about thirty-four hundred square feet, which is not gonna make it look like the, the largest house in the neighborhood. And I think what Dave was, was starting to say is that, you know, the bylaw is, is kind of numbers-based. And it's within the setbacks. It's lower than the, the height that it can be. It's, you know, far enough away from the, from the street. It, it meets all the numbers of the bylaw. But there are, you know, ten or a dozen people in the neighborhood that don't think this is a good idea. And really, the only leverage that they have is whether or not it's detrimental to the neighborhood. Because it, it meets all the other criteria of the bylaw that we have to follow. So although it is a large house, you know, there, there's not, there's, there's not much that you can say because it, it beats, it meets all the criteria of the bylaw. So, um, you know, I understand what the neighbors are all saying, I hear them. But, you know, um, I, I think I would probably approve this just because of the numbers.
And Lee?
So, um, I, I actually agree with Dave and Steve. It, it's here before us because of the frontage. And I'm glad it is because I think the process that we've gone through has been very valuable. And I think that it has made a difference. And while I have heard the neighbors, I think that, um, what the owners have done is, is been substantial. And, um, I appreciate it. I don't think the first design that we were presented with was, was, um, appropriate for that neighborhood. I think it's gotten much better. It's still a large house, um, for that neighborhood. And that neighborhood is unique and very special. But I think that, um, you know, to ask if it's substantially more detrimental, I don't think so. I also think that the lot next door helps it in some ways. It gives it some more space, um, from a visual perspective. So, um, I'll, I'll be voting in favor of this one.
And Paul, what will you do?
Well, uh, we've spent a lot of time looking at this. And, um, I've spent a lot of time going up and going through the neighborhood. And we've had a lot of good input from the neighbors with suggestions on what should be done. And I think that, uh, as Lee said, the process has been helpful, uh, in changing what was originally proposed. And when you come to the idea that but for nine feet on the frontage, they wouldn't be here at all. And perhaps that first proposal would be what was being constructed. I think the process has worked fairly well in terms of trying to get people, uh, on the same page. And hopefully they will be able to get on the same page. But basically, I think that they have made substantial concessions. They've addressed the question of the fifth room or bedroom. And they've addressed the question of, uh, the overall gross square footage, reducing the size of the headroom and the basement and so forth. And when you balance the rights of, uh, the ability to try and do what you want to do with your property, it seems to me that they've, uh, they've made the concessions that were necessary in order for, uh, for me to vote affirmatively with respect to this proposal. So that's what I would intend to do.
Well, thank you. And, um, I, I do, I would just say that originally, when the homeowner came, there was a conversation that she had with us, uh, where she told us that, um, they loved the house when they saw it. And they were practically devastated that they had to make, they had to tear it down. And so I think that's sort of not equal to what's happened because if they wanted to keep the house that was there, they could have just, and then they realized they couldn't do that. They could have built a very similar sized house. But instead of doing that, they built one much larger. They want to build one much larger. So I think that was incongruent and it caused some dissonance with, with the neighbors because they didn't understand, if you liked it so much like that, why do you have to build such a, such a bigger one? And I also don't give credit to when you ask for something of fifty-six ninety-six at the beginning, just because you've come down to something that's probably acceptable. I don't give credit to that at all. It's like thanking someone for stuff hitting you in the head. You know, you should have been doing it in the first place. So that's the way I look at something like that. And you, and then also, um, I do like the idea that they're gonna hook up the sewer and that they're gonna deal with all the runoff. And, um, I think when you come down the street, you're not gonna really be bothered by this. People are concerned about that it looks like a three-story house in the back. But my understanding of that back area is that's how it always looks when you have a walkout basement. And so there's not a lot you can do about that. And, you know, I also think that it's unfortunate when allegedly you tell neighbors that you're gonna come back to them one more time and you don't. You know, you set yourself up for, for also some dismay. Not that you have to go back to your neighbors. It costs money to have an architect and an attorney and meet and meet and meet. So, you know, I think enough is enough, um, at this point. And this is something that I would not be able to say is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. But I think although the process worked, it was a little, um, you know, concerning with the things that I had mentioned. And so anybody listening to this that's gonna come before us, you know, try to take that into consideration. And just come with something that's reasonable in the first place. And you don't put yourself through so much torture. So with that, I would vote yes. Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at enabling property with the permission of the property owner. That between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
David seconds and votes yes.
And Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I, it's unanimous. Congratulations and best of luck to the applicants. And, uh, hope it all works out. So with that, um, we have a motion to adjourn, I think.
I'll move to adjourn.
Uh, David seconds and votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. And what time is it?
Five forty-three PM.
How do you like that? Good night, Chatham.